Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting for November 16th, regular board meeting, to order. We'd like to start with Pledge of Allegiance. Call if you have a moment. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Ms. Bruce, we have roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
President.
Mr. Magich.
Present.
Mr. Savick.
Present.
And Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the addition of the addendum. Just in case some of you didn't get the last addendum, there was an update later this afternoon for two hires under the B section of nine. The addendum, including that new one. So if you just look at that, that would be the only change that would have been on the addendum. Entertain a motion to accept that.
Second.
Quick question, Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Well, I guess two comments. One, I just want to take a second to put it out on the agenda to wish the fellow veterans, from this past Thursday Veterans Day, a lot of veterans in Oregon City School District, thank you for taking the time to serve and protect our country. It's very important, you know, the fellow American. I think we just need to make sure we're recognized. I know we did on social media on the day of the election. Second, then, I would like to pull right on E, new business, but for approval of band uniform. As far as I'm aware of this, they didn't come from admin. It didn't come from the Capitol, as it normally would have. So I'd like to just revisit that and bring it back at next time after it.
That's under the consent agenda. That's under new business? And that's just to set the bids out if that's not the purchase?
I know. But it's second one to note, we have something on our agenda that has to follow our process. Okay, your motion was to approve the entire agenda, right? Including it. Okay, yes. I would like to pull that so it can follow the normal process.
So then the motion on the table is to either approve the full agenda with E in place or to vote on it. Maybe, is it two separate votes then, Mrs. Bruce?
Yes, we have, we have two.
Yes, it is a separate E.
His motion would have to go first. As we entertain, we have first and a second, which allows us to discuss. He's made a motion to remove one item from the agenda. He needs a second for that and then a vote. I'm removing that item.
Is there a second?
So we have a second for the motion. No seconds. Nice, relax, we have a second. So the vote now would be to accept the agenda with the addendum. It's been first and second, if we have roll call, please.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
No.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes. Okay, we do have a public participation at this time. Gary Ackerman, would you like to come forward, please? I won't read this whole thing since you've spoken before. You know the procedures. We need your name and address first. Do you have three minutes?
Hi, I'm Gary Ackerman, 8560 Brown Road. Hey, good evening, everybody. So now I just want to express my opinion and concern for the little kids that are going to be, we're having a vaccination clinic from the health department. And I just want to say that I don't believe we should host a clinic by the health department. And I'm going to word this this way. To inject our precious elementary kids with an experimental cocktail. This is gene therapy drug. Bill Gates explains the DNA altering technology. I've sent all of you privately information that warns of serious heart risks these injections pose for children and even adults, even athletes, are dropping on the field. I want to play Robert F. Kennedy Jr. I think we all like him, and I think we need to hear what he has to say.
My father told me when I was a child, people in authority lie. And we all, if we are going to continue to live in a democracy, we need to understand that people in authority lie. People in authority will abuse every power that we relinquish to them. And right now, we are giving them the power to micromanage every bit of our lives 24 hours a day. They're going to know where we are. They're going to know the money that we spend. They're going to have access to our children. They're going to have the right to compel unwanted medical interventions on us. We, you know, the Nazis did that in the camps in World War II. They tested vaccines on Gypsies and Jews. And the world was so horrified after the war that we signed the Nuremberg Charter. And we all pledged when we do that, we would never again impose unwanted medical interventions on human beings without informed consent. And yet, in two years, all of that conviction has suddenly disappeared. And people are walking around in masks with a sign that has not been explained to them.
Do you have anything else to say, Gary?
Doing what they're told. They are orchestrated. These government agencies are orchestrating obedience. And it is not Democrat. It's not the product of democracy.
No, no.
It's a pharmaceutical-driven IO security agenda.
Three minutes, guys, a minute.
I'll shut this off. I have three minutes to share.
Three minutes.
And that's why I share. I won't play anything fancy. I'm just asking you. This is a bigger, this is a bigger agenda. And I'm giving you information, and I will not bring up this subject again. I've already laid out what I think, and I've given you some information for that. So I'm concerned about what's going to happen down the road and with the research that I've done, and a lot of others and a lot of doctors. So I just want to give you that information. It's not happy information, and you already have that. And so I thank you for listening to me tonight. And my concern is for the little kids that are not affected by this, but we're rolling out the red carpet to accommodate these injections. And I just pray to God that we don't have problems. Thank you very much.
I just got one question for you. In the past, if I have listened correctly, you wanted the option, the choice.
Exactly.
So we're giving those parents that do the research and feel a different way than what you have, an opportunity to do what they feel is right for the kids. So we're giving them, parents, options, I think the main basis.
I get it.
While on site, so I'm just a little.
Yeah, I think parents, parents have already made their decision for the kids. And I say, let them go to their doctor. I mean, we're, you know, we're setting up shop in Oregon, and we're accommodating it. And I don't know. We're concerned last month with what's in the vaping, what's in those bottles. And this month, I'm concerned what's in those vials. We don't know all the ingredients. So we're, you know, we're accommodating something. I don't know if we have full information on that. I'm concerned.
We'll try and be good communities.
I get it.
The public buildings, let people use them. And you have other choice, that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Do we have any community recognition this evening?
Nope, nothing today.
We'll move now to the treasuries report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shea. I've provided you guys with the packet. On the top are the adjustments to the budget forecast. Behind that is a five-year forecast with my normal estimate of what the revenues will look like for last year and then estimates for five years. And I updated the true cash to what the estimates are. And I also have a, behind that, you'll find the adjustment for the permanent appropriation measure. I'll go through this. I just want you to know what everybody should have. It's a little different tonight. Typically, we vote on this, but I discussed this in our finance committee. And I'm going to go through this. I've done all the work. It's just, I think we are missing some kind of key pieces that I think will make it a better forecast. And I will get it filed. And then when we have a little bit better numbers that we're sure of, then we will go through it in more detail. I have updated the real estate taxes. Many of you, I'm sure, know Lucas County went through a financial update. We were told the valuations increased by 20%. I have not received any of those valuations. I haven't received any estimates of those valuations. Usually, the county would provide estimates of some kind. I have nothing. I've put the increase for the current year basically to represent the inside millage, the six mills of inside millage. There could be additional increases if we had an increase in our public utility property, because that is taxed at the full effective millage rate. The homes and commercial real estate property, I'm not saying people won't notice an increase in their taxes, but the schools' effective millage rate will roll back, and schools will receive only the amount that was voted on. So there are other letters coming out. I know we're one of the larger ones, but except for inside millage, we will receive what was voted on. But as I said before, we don't have those values. I did keep real estate taxes fairly flat. And moving forward, there's a bump in '24, '25, because we will have a reappraisal that year, which would probably increase. One of the reasons I want the full millage, I'm sorry, the valuations, is that will help me know what one mill will bring in in our community. Once I know that, I can take five eights of it and reduce the amount of whole harmless monies we're receiving. That's showing up in other operating income. So that's another reason, you know, that we don't have this. Foundation basic aid. For the first time in my life, I've used a model to come up with what the state formula will look like. We will not receive actual calculations from ODE until December. They originally planned on getting it to us in October, but there are, there are, there's data coming from so many different databases that it's quite a process for them, so I do empathize. But it does create a challenge to truly calculate it properly. When you look at it, this, the first two years of our foundation, the only form of a guarantee, we were on what we called the guarantee, meaning that we were guaranteed whatever we got a few years ago. Supposedly, we're off the guarantee, and we're going to be a formula district. But the first two years, we're guaranteed the net open enrollment. So the number, so what it works out to is roughly $1 million. When you take the net of what we used to receive, about 1.6 million, and subtract out what we used to pay out, it's about $1 million. So that amount is actually, for the first two years of forecast, we are held harmless for that amount. So that's included in part of the reason for the increase in our foundation. Again, there's initial jump the first two years. And I kept it flat '23, '24. I'm open for arguments on that. My concern, though, is the legislature was unwilling. When the new formula was rolled out, they established it a six-year roll-in, meaning that, you know, obviously, we were going to get $6,000. Well, the first year, we were going to get $1,000. So they're taking six years to roll it in. In the current legislature, we use two-year biannual budget. Current legislature was not for tying the hands of future legislatures. So I'm hesitant to assume they will move forward, unfortunately. I don't want to sound, I mean, we've been through this picnic before when Strickland's new budget went through, and then we were put on another guarantee. So not, this may not happen. It's got a lot of good support. But to be fiscally responsible, I'd assume that there's some potential there that we could. Obviously, purchase services, very modest increase, but we no longer have open enrollment coming out. Scholarships, charter, community, school deductions. We no longer have any of that coming out. In the past, that was taken out of our foundation. Now, the money goes directly to charters, parochials, whatever, whoever's getting that funding. So that no longer shows and elevates our expenditures. The other items are pretty self-explanatory. The bottom line is, even with the unknowns, you know, we're projected to spend more than we're taking in, but we, but we have a solid forecast in the black in terms of our cash balances. So I, I don't necessarily, I think we'll want to adjust it. Hopefully, we'll have something in December, maybe January, and then we can do a little bit better job with finalizing it. I will, of course, file it, but we won't finalize it. I did use the numbers from the forecast in the updated appropriation measure. We have had the carryforward funds have been put into the grants. So we're going to, Jennifer and myself will be working on updating the CCIP grants for the federal grants in the coming weeks. And then, obviously, the general fund was adjusted to match the estimated forecast. So unless there are questions, that's my report. My financial audits moving forward. The GAAP financials were filed, so we're in that era as well. So.
Jane, what's the ESAR funds go through on that?
ESAR funds do not show on this.
Okay.
What I'm planning on is one of the, still, we have talked about using ESAR funds in some capacity to stretch the general fund further. But I want that to be very clear as an in and an out, even within the five-year forecast. So it's clear, so we know when that's going to come back in, because it is one-time only. We don't want to find ourselves not paying attention to that. But right now, it's not in there, okay?
And then in the '21, '22 estimate, what's causing the advances in and out of financial sources?
Oh, you know what happened there? That was like that big blip, because we had spent some ESAR money, and they hadn't advanced it to us yet. We had, it was, so that million, we had done purchase orders against the ESAR funds for some of the, I'm going to draw a blank. I apologize, I can't get you the detail. But we had some larger outstanding purchase orders, orders.
When we did the technology and some of the curriculum?
Technology, curriculum, yeah. I have to go back to detail. I probably can look it up even with the immediate if you like. But that's what it was. It was primarily the ESAR funds. We always have some grants. We have to get money back, but most of it was the ESAR that we had not gotten funded yet. Because I'm not even sure the grant was approved at that point. Well, it had to be approved, or we couldn't do POs.
I was just curious, because if you look at the revenue over hundred financials, let's say that those funds didn't flow through, we would be in negative funding this year.
Exactly, exactly. And those are always, I mean, if you look, you see the million two going out the other end, you know, from the year before. So if you look down at advances out, if this is your 2021, you see it right there. So it's, sometimes, it's really not playing with it, but it seems a little bit that way, so.
So while the 90 days is recommended, days cash on.
Anywhere from 60 to 90, yes. No, so we have to be careful. I'm not, so.
And when was the last lobby week, operating lobby we had passed?
2015, I believe.
So it's not even on this report?
No, it's in here.
Well, I mean, the year we did it, it's not, because it was that far back.
Oh, no, it would be a gang collection in the 2016 year.
16, 17.
15, 16, we'd get the first half in 16, and then the 16, 17.
Close collections, not just showing on.
No, it is not. And I can certainly show that.
No, I'm just trying to put a timeline together. Now that we started it, which is a lobby cycle, I'm trying to get the broader picture of what we said.
Sure, yeah.
Well, in the piece, Jane and I talked about, you know, if the second natural plant were to happen, and I'm hearing positive things. I'm hearing very positive that it's potential. There's an agreement already, and Jeff, you probably remember, Mike, you may remember. I'm not sure. Where essentially, it's about a 15-year, $15 million total agreement that we would have in place once it's operating. So when the shovels hit the ground, we'd get a $250,000 payment. But then, another two and a half years to complete it, we would then start that larger amount agreement.
Yes.
Assuming that stays in place now. It's been how many years since that idea came to fruition?
Is that some fact, and we renegotiate or anything, or?
I?
I'm not aware it has to, but it's been such a long time. That's a good question.
We might want to ask legal, but I, that's a good point.
Yep. Yep.
Thanks, Jeff.
What's that?
Extended there.
It's been at least that.
They have time to put it in, so that's something.
Yep, yep.
And later on in the meeting, I don't, I don't need money, but there is the annual, it's bookkeeping issue of requesting the advances on our taxes. So if anyone has questions about that, it's just our annual bookkeeping, where when they start collecting the money, we all want them. Well, it means more now that we're actually completely, I don't know if it's good or bad, but we'll get more interest. So they'll send the money to us instead of holding on to it at Lucas County Auditor's office. So I just want you to look at, all right.
Any other questions, or Jane, or?
Just one more comment, just because I received an email today, actually, and I know it's on the minds. You know, ESAR funds are, there's questions surrounding, like, the use of ESAR funds. And I just want, you know, the public and everybody to know that those ESAR funds flow into a federal grant online software portal that we have to justify every penny in larger categories, you know, of how we're going to use that. And there is checks and balances at the state level about are we using those funds appropriately under the, the, I don't know, maybe there's 12 categories? And we have to justify that. I mean, we can't use any of those funds unless it's approved by those grant approvers at the state level. Jane lives in that world. It's the same process that we've used forever for our other federal funds that we've received in the past. So I guess it's not just this pot of money that flows to Jane or flows to us, and then we get to do whatever we want or whatever. It's a, it's a very specific, you know, way that we have to justify how to use it and where to use it. And at the end of the whole thing, there's audits that go through and make sure we did it right. So, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that there's no hiding of ESAR funds. There's none of that. Now, I think at a future meeting, when we get a little bit closer to exactly how we intend to spend it, we've got some good roadmap, and I think we have a real good, open discussion about that. I don't know if we're quite ready. Right now, very little has been spent of at least ESAR two, if I could say, and ESAR three. ESAR one, which is quite a while ago, has to be spent, I think, in September, maybe. Or was that one already had been spent?
I'm communicating CRF funds, the COVID recovery.
Yeah, there's three different models that have different timelines.
That one has, I already had to turn it in the filing expenditure report.
So that one is.
So that one's used up.
Yeah.
That was $190,000.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So there's no federal guidelines for allowing you to expand and renovate the superintendent's office?
No, I cannot do that, no. That's not directly tied to COVID.
It's a case that we must somehow get started.
Although my air conditioning doesn't work all the right time, or my heating, but that's all right.
Okay, any other questions, the treasurer? Motion to approve treasurer's report?
Was that?
Sorry.
All right. Ready for the roll call, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes. Does anyone have a reason for an executive session at this time? No interest? Okay, we go on to the consent agenda items that have been voted on. New business. Jane has mentioned this, we have a request for tax.
Well, we have to vote on the consent agenda first.
I'm sorry.
We adopted the agenda.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm, I'm.
Don't worry.
Thank you very much. Yes, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ready for roll call. Okay, Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we move on to the. Okay, item A, request for advance of taxes. Jane, would you explain that a little bit?
Oh, okay, that was what I was mentioning. And every year, it's fairly much a bookkeeping item where we, in writing, ask that the auditor advance any funds as they collect them. And we get several funds, so that we don't have to wait until the end of, you know, February or whatever for settlements to keep the money flowing to us.
Motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Savick? I'm sorry. Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes. B, Organic Economic Development Foundation, motion to renew the membership in Organic Economic Development Foundation for 2022 year. The fee is $250. Motion for that, please.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
C, Interpreter Services, motion to enter intern agreement with the following. U.S., Us Together, interpreting services provide interpretation and translation. Agreement has been distributed to the board previously. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll calls.
Roll call, please, roll call.
Mr. Magich.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes. Okay, this is the first reading for the palaces, all of you. This has been distributed. It's a very lengthy list. This is only the first reading. I'm not going to read each one individually. Each of you should look over these. At the next board meeting, we will be voting on them. So obviously, just by reading the names and the titles of them, it would help very much anyway, so. That's the first reading for those. E, bid approval for band uniforms. Motion for this, please.
So moved.
Motion to grant, let me, let me rephrase that. It'll be a motion to grant permission to.
It'll be a motion to grant permission to Clay High School band director to solicit bids for the purchase of marching hazard band uniforms. Need a motion for that, please?
So moved. Second.
And I'll just add my quick comment that I think at some point we need to get back to actually following the board processes for getting items on the agenda and having proper discussion on them.
Okay, he said he would like the proper process taking place.
Yeah, I got that.
He was asking because he didn't hear it.
Let everybody know I'm getting new Harry Gates in two weeks, so I apologize.
This was brought, I think, with the finance committee. If as far as the process economically, that was one of the things we discussed in finance committee. Um, and possibly you're right, Jeff, maybe it needed to go to the capital improvement also. This is kind of a timeline thing that we're dealing with, that is the main reason it would have brought so quickly. So I apologize for not going through the right procedures. I think, I think you're exactly right, it should have met both, both areas.
Um, providing a little bit of background for everyone who's wondering about that. Um, first finance committee being a couple of months ago, um, uh, some numbers were put forward. Uh, Mr. Gregory, Mrs. Fruth regarding, uh, band uniforms. At that point, it became apparent to me that, um, the band had started collecting last year seventy dollars per child, per parent. Um, for each of the kids who were in the band, uh, building toward a band uniform fund. Um, and, um, it struck me interestingly enough that if you had a child who came in as a freshman. Um, that child, uh, the parent will have paid two hundred eighty dollars by the time that child graduated and they would not have band uniforms to show for it. And this is something that, the issues that we've had in the past when I worked at the university and the University of Foundation. Um, is very gracious in working with, uh, departments on helping to provide support. And interest free loans to help pay for band uniforms. Uh, or other projects, I should say, at the university. And so what we did was we did ask, uh, Joe, the band director, to provide some additional information as to what the potential cost for those would be. With the thought being is that we would continue as a district to collect the seventy dollars per child. Um, uh, per year and use and provide an interest free loan from the P I fund, which is also a holding fund for a variety of other things. Um, and then that money would be used to allow the band to go ahead and purchase new uniforms for the coming year. I want to put this in perspective. These band uniforms have been in use for fifteen years. So the kids have been using the same uniforms for fifteen years. The band parents have collected twenty one thousand dollars so far. Um, the collections is over fourteen thousand dollars. We're waiting for obviously the quotes, but based on preliminary quotes, the cost per uniform is going to be about six hundred and fifty dollars. A loan approval will be about sixty three thousand dollars. That will allow the district, there will be a written agreement that will allow the district to continue to collect the band fees for the band uniforms. So that we can tell the parents of the children in this district that we value what the band does. The largest student organization on this campus, it's the largest parent supported student organizations as well, uh, at Clay High School. And we will, we provide them, uh, that money, that money is continued to be collected at seventy dollars per year. So that when the kids come in, they see the uniforms, we tell the parents that seventy dollars that you're paying right now is responsible for that. No longer will we have taxation without representation. Um, to give you an idea, as I mentioned, it's fifteen years now for these uniforms, the normal life cycle, it's, it's fifteen years. In two thousand and six, the band ordered two hundred band uniforms, the band was slightly larger back then. Right now, approximately fifty percent of the existing uniforms are usable. Our seamstress spends twenty hours per week during the marching band season making repairs to seams, tears, buttons and things like that. And while they may look, um. Some is the naked eye, they look pretty good, the other, they do look pretty good, but guess what? I don't know about you, but I don't have too many items, despite what my wife may tell you. I don't have too many items up to fifteen years old in my closet. And our student athletes receive new uniforms on a much quicker turnaround time than this. And I just think it's something that's very, very, very important for us to consider. Uh, and that's why it was discussed with the finance committee and brought forward to the support of the grants.
So Hal, if I heard that right, you brought this forward to the finance committee as a recommendation?
I, I, it, it, it was a kind of a collective thing. I had been talking with Joe for, for, I don't know, on and off for the last couple of years about uniforms. But I think what Mr. Savick did is bring in different, um, I guess thought process to how we should go about, um. Looking at the funding model for it. Uh, so I think we're, we're, the process may have been a little jumbled about what came first, what came second. I think at the end of the day, uh, we all agree that we need new band uniforms. I'm not, certainly not against the new band uniforms whatsoever. And really tonight's, uh, the reason we have this on here tonight is we believe that the cost of the uniforms is, you know. Over fifty thousand dollar threshold that we, uh, can't just move forward without support from Board of Education. So this was just the first step to, uh, Joe's got a quote from one place, I believe, but we need to now go get quotes from multiple places. To see if we've got the best, I guess, uh, cost for our, for our band, uh, kids or for the uniforms. So I know the boosters are committed to the, to the over twenty thousand dollars. I, I, I confirmed that today with, uh, the band president. And we, we don't have any future commitments from the band, but we do have what the board's approved for, for fees for the band uniforms. So, so do I support it? Absolutely. Uh, did the process come through in a typical manner? No, but Mr. Savick was new to the board, had some new ideas and it kind of led to this. So I guess that's the best way I can explain it.
I, I, I don't just really need new uniforms, um, I get my own internal process we have followed and we have in place. But again, I know that logic, I play, I pay participation fees for sports. My kid gonna see a new cross country uniform during this lifetime? Probably not. So, you know, we want fair representation for the whole student body, not segmenting whole people out and treating them differently.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call please, Mr. Fruth?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
No.
Okay, item F, disposal of equipment and materials, motion to dispose of the following. Um, District Y to D prior for the Oregon, then there were A through N, which looks like it's all band equipment. It must be all, um, no longer usable, so we have to dispose of it properly, you know, A through N. Motion to dispose of this equipment.
So moved. Second.
Quick question, Hal, it might be more Dean related, like with the, the, I guess, any of the providing the equipment. Is the process we go through to, I mean, is it usual to anybody else that we donate or is it like just total junk that we just scrap it?
Both, I think if the.
So stuff that can be used by anyone that needs it, we find a home for it?
Yes, and we do, we do auction some things off, we do, but a lot of it is just junk at that point.
Okay, thanks.
Ready for roll call?
Roll call please.
All right, Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
And Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Donations. G, motion to accept the following donations, Walmart donated crayons, sherbys, T two pens, all of the different type of, of small appliances. Um, ABC workbooks to Jerusalem Elementary School. Motion to accept these donations, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ready for roll call?
Roll call please.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And I have Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
And Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And can I just say, I certainly want to thank Walmart and Vivian Stubler, as you know, is a volunteer and an employee of our district. And she, uh, she was the lead, I guess, uh, uh, person in this acquiring all this stuff. She, she was aware of some situ, of some, someone that she's friends with at Walmart, that they were going to toss a lot of this stuff. That was still very, very, uh, applicable to our kids and to our schools and so she helped secure the donations. So again, thanks to Walmart and certainly to, to Vivian for her help.
Okay, H, disposal of equipment and materials, the items listed in the October nineteenth agenda for disposal have been disposed of importance with board policy. How we go to board superintendent's report, please?
Thank you. Uh, just a, really not a long one. Um, COVID continues to, to be a topic, but I don't think it's as, as talked about daily as it used to be, which is a good thing. Uh, I gave you in the report just the updated statistics, uh, that, that I look at regularly. Um, we do have the vaccination clinic at Star Elementary tomorrow from four to seven thirty that is run by the health department. So really all we're doing is providing the space and some tables and chairs. So, so I'll be out at that for, for a couple of hours, um, supporting those folks and what they're doing. Uh, in terms of the numbers, uh, basically I just screenshotted what's on our website, so this is available to the public. Um, we, we've seen, we saw kind of a peak back in September. You can see it kind of with, with the Lucas County cases for one hundred thousand. Uh, it has been steadily dropping then for the last maybe six, seven weeks. And then just this week, this past week, it, uh, went up a little bit, um, from three twenty three for one hundred thousand to three seventy two. So there is a slight uptick around the districts, uh, with COVID, uh, those types of things. We've had a pretty steady, um, number of positives, uh, between six and seven for the last four weeks, five weeks. Um, that's with masks, without masks, it's been pretty consistent now. With that being said, uh, I anticipate a higher number this week, we're already at six. Uh, positives this week, it's only Tuesday, um, so I expect a few more. Uh, now, a couple of those were, uh, I think, kind of connected at one particular school. So I, I, by no means do I feel we're having an outbreak at this point in time, no means do I feel like it's out of control in any way. Um, we do have a higher number of, uh, kids that have been quarantined because of a couple of sports teams. And the health regulations are a little bit tricky, uh, with, they're a little bit different with health, uh, with sports teams than they are with classroom based exposures. Uh, but we do have a number of kids wearing masks because they were exposed, but that's, that's good, they're staying in school. And so when you see kind of the inflated number there of, uh, week over week, it went from sixty three to one oh three, that was primarily because of a couple of sports teams that were out. Uh, when you look at a sports team of eight to ten kids and you had a couple of them, it raises it up. But all in all, I feel real good about where we're at. Uh, it's still a lot of work, I, I can't thank our nurses and our leaders of the buildings enough for what they do every day, calling parents, working through the situations. It is stressful, it is hard, it is, um, not fun a good amount of the time because people get very frustrated, but it is the job. And they're doing it very, very well. Uh, our nurses are fantastic people, all seven of them. So, uh, any questions on COVID in particular?
Hal, have we, and technically I'm sort of, but have we seen much difference from when we went to the unmasked?
Yeah, uh, uh, so if you look at that.
It must have worked now for our staff that were not matched with the new.
It's not less, it's, I mean, that's a good question. A, you can see the dark, I, I grade the dark week, the twenty fifth through the thirty first. We went to no masks on the Thursday of that week, so we had two days without mask. And then now we're in the third full week without masks. The first two weeks were very, very typical to the last, the previous couple of weeks. Like I said, this week we're up a couple, we'll see how it ends and whether it's significantly up or just a little bit up. Uh, but in terms of the work, um, that's part of the frustration on, on our nurses and folks because we still have to make all the phone calls. We still have to, um, uh, call all the parents, we still have to enter into the, uh, county database, all this stuff. It's really not eliminated the work, but.
Makes it easier for the students to pay.
Exactly, to stay in school, that's what it's done.
And then I know Washington Local went back to that because they internally set a.
They set a standard now.
Did you guys set it?
We did not.
No, you didn't. Reevaluate if needed.
Yep, we will certainly do, that's why I'm saying, that's why I, I share this with you each month and this is what I look at as kind of my trends. Because this is real numbers, these are at least the cases that we are aware of. Um, they're, they're fairly, I mean, I don't mean they're insignificant from the standpoint of, of an individual got COVID. But from a percentage wise, they're very, very, very low.
I think there's more for the parents and stuff to know that you haven't said anything because once Washington came out, it's like, what's all that?
They set a number of forty five positives and, and they must have hit that threshold last week, one of the days. Um, I'm not aware of any other district that has a particular threshold, but again, I, I, every district has a unique situation and, and, uh, we may be there at some point. I, I've learned not to make any predictions, that is one thing I've learned because the other flow of COVID has been something that we've all learned by. But I, I'm hopeful, you know, I'm hopeful that our system will continue to, to work and that kids can come to school, mask optional, that's my goal. Hope. Um, okay, so any more questions on COVID? Um, I think just the other, the other big piece, I just want you to now, uh, kind of start thinking about now that, that board elections. I know we have, uh, Ms. Cathers is in the audience, so congratulations to, to Lindsay, uh, who will be a board member beginning in, in, uh, January. And so one of the keys, we've been talking about internally is strategic planning and I, I'm, I'm really gearing up internally. I'm having discussions around the district with, with my leadership staff. Uh, one of our alumni from back in nineteen sixty eight, you, you probably know Tom Keller, he's been around now for quite a few years. And he's spent his entire life training organizations, training high level businesses and strategic planning. And, and he has offered his services again to our board if, if the board is willing and would like to have, uh, Mr. Keller come facilitate. He lives in Arizona, but he, he's willing and has been for years flying back periodically throughout the, throughout the school years. And so I would recommend that maybe we, we think about having Tom lead us in an, at least in an initial session, uh, to kind of get us, uh, on the right path. And, uh, but I just wanted to put that in front of you and to start thinking, I think we need to start coordinating that sooner than later. Uh, we will certainly invite, uh, Ms. Cathers to, to join us in any meetings that we have related to that. So, um, any questions on, on that?
In the next couple of months, are you waiting until after New Year?
I was thinking sooner.
You want something beginning December?
December, yeah, exactly, that's what I was thinking, maybe the first couple of weeks of December, we could have an initial work session.
Do you have any dates from him that?
Uh, no, but I, I kind of want to get the feel for the board tonight, if, 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 if so, I could certainly reach out. We have a call actually in a couple of days, so on Thursday.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm probably going to just, you know, get some dates from him that we can then jock you out.
That'd be great, I, I, I'll see if, if he's available during that time and if he is, that'd be fantastic and, uh, we'll get, we'll get him in here. Awesome. And then finally, just, I want to wish the, the winter sports season starts Friday. I think we have a girls' home basketball game, which is exciting. Uh, you know, it's, it's hard to believe how quick from one season to the next season goes, but a lot of energy in basketball this year and wrestling and in all the winter sports. We have weightlifting, a lot of things going on, so, um, want to wish all those coaches and athletes a great season. Uh, I'm very excited for it and, uh, looking forward to going to the games.
Which is, uh, I meant the all sports thing would be included.
That's coming up, yes, correct, yep, yep, all, all sports winding up. Any questions in general?
I, I do want to make a comment and it is a question also, uh, the line letter's performances last weekend was fabulous and especially the Saturday show, bringing the alumni back was really cool. But in talking with Amy Hansen, my understanding is, is the result of that news conference regarding the.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the, the new performing arts center, the, the Carol Anne Molnar Performing Arts Center. That one of the people who was an initial donor at a lower level, um, was so impressed by the news conference and the plans that that person subsequently stepped up with a larger, much larger gift, is that correct?
That is correct, thank you for bringing that up. Um, you know, we had that press conference and, uh, the donor was so, so impressed and, and, uh, what, basically the larger donation is. Is sponsoring a new dance floor, so it's the dance section of, of this project. We had a run of the mill, basic dance floor in the original bid, but because of this donor stepping up. Uh, on behalf of the donor's mother, who was a, uh, long time ago graduate of Clay High School. Um, won't go into it too deep at this point in time, but we were able to purchase the, the, the floor that Mr. Snead had. Uh, more of a wooden, I don't know how to describe it, more of a flexible wooden dance floor that is truly a dance floor with the right amount of, uh. Pushing and give and all that, so, so thank you, Mr. Savick, for bringing that up. We were very excited from that press conference to one week later, we had that all, all sewn up. This is Hanson, part of the foundation, uh, worked, worked with the donor throughout that week and, uh, they wanted to be the first, they wanted to get wrapped up before it was given away. And we still have other opportunities. We still have other opportunities, so we need to get that word out. But yes, very excited about the Carol Anne Molnar Performing Arts. It's brought a lot of energy to the arts. And again, I want to echo what you said, the dance musical that we had was really good up on Sunday, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
The old business. Okay, board committee reports. Finance, basically, Mrs. Ruth took most of the things we discussed, and she discussed it in her report. Basically, we talked about band uniforms, how we were going to go through that process of funding, and waiting for the information that she needs to finalize the five-year report. That's all I have for finance. Capital improvement?
No report, but I think Dean has a couple of things we want to update real quick.
I simply want to give a little timeline on the Performing Arts Center. You'll see a temporary fence, construction fence going up over Thanksgiving break with activities starting by the first week in December where they'll start the demolition. So we're excited about that. You'll see activity very, very shortly, and it will be done by July.
Any other capital improvement?
No.
Health and safety? Nothing from health and safety.
Nothing specific, yeah.
Policy and personnel, that's Mrs. Molnar, she's.
Well, we had the first reading of the policies tonight, so.
And our policy upgrade, yeah. Academic?
Academic committee met last week. Professional Development Day for folks in the seven through twelve range took place on November second. Clay High School sponsored the Career Tech Breakfast, which allowed members of our community who are very supportive of the Career Tech programs here to come back and receive recognition. And it was a huge turnout that morning in the cafeteria. And we're very thankful for all the work our community partners are doing to help support our Career Tech programs here at the high school. Also, we had a training at Clay for the new math and world language textbooks and focus activities. Facet, meanwhile, had training on the new math textbook, time to work on high-quality student data assessments for the new teacher evaluation system. And math, English, and science also spent time reviewing the item analysis results from eighteen, nineteen, and review and release tests. The next Professional Development Day is set for January fourteenth. That will be for folks in the K through twelve. We also did a deep dive into the 2021 State Report, our document. One of the key areas that the district looks at, it's all districts do, is value-added, which measures progress as well as instructional effectiveness. Some of the areas that were very, very strong for our city schools, and keep in mind on the whole, these numbers were down locally, regionally, statewide, nationally, in large results as a result of COVID. But English learn, English language arts, we scored above average in fourth, in grades four, five, seven, eight, and in high school. But that means basically that we've had growth at or above expected levels. And also math in the sixth grade, areas that we definitely, definitely need to improve upon. Seventh, eighth grade math and science, high school algebra and geometry. Teacher value-added reports will be available later this year, and the teachers will be receiving access to those before the calendar year is up. That's my report.
Thank you very much. E legislative, I attended the Capitol Conference in Columbus with the Ohio School Board Association. Basically, most of the legislation is being monitored right now. A lot of things are in action, especially economically with funding for schools, other academic and other situations that are on the ballot, or not on the ballot, in the House or the Senate are not being acted on at this point in time during committee, most of them. That's all I have for legislation. Student achievement, please, then. That's Mrs. Molnar.
Yeah, yeah.
So she does that report. Okay, board discussion, any board members have anything to discuss at this time? Again, a need for executive session. No need for executive session, okay. Announcement of special regular board meetings. Our regular meeting is scheduled for December twenty-first at six P.M. on December. And our Janu.
We want to, that's so close that Christmas holiday week, we only have a thing moving that up a week.
Interested in entertaining moving that meeting up one week in December?
To take it out of the holiday.
Taking it out of the holiday week. Let's look in our calendar and see what that does.
Maybe the fourteenth?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a, not that this matters, but just so, there's a band concert that night.
Fourteenth?
On the fourteenth. There is a home game, and not that it matters. Those are at seven, so I guess six o'clock would work now that I'm looking at the times on the fourteenth.
So move the December meeting to the fourteenth at six o'clock? Does that work with everyone?
Oh. Just having to ask about the thirteenth. I don't have anything in my calendar conflict on Monday, the thirteenth. Is that, is that too soon for anything? Ms. Ruth, anything that you would see?
We will, we will do the best we can.
I mean, I'm not thinking anything on my end.
Would that work with you?
We'll get it done.
Contemplating the five-year forecast if not.
Oh, that could go to, it'll be fine.
It could go to January?
It could go to January, depends on what I get from people, yeah.
That would buy you a little more time, anyway.
The fourteenth is my late night at work, I don't usually get out of it till late.
Well, we could do.
What about the fifteenth? Well.
The fifteenth, either one doesn't conflict with me.
Oh, okay. I'm saying.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, what's that look like for sports?
There, I don't see anything. On the sixteenth, there's an Eisenhower Band Enquirer concert.
Fifteenth is better?
So the fifteenth Wednesday? Mr. Zawiski?
Yeah, look.
Okay, we need to make a motion for that or just?
No, just.
Just so we be at the public address though and let everybody know. So it'll be December fifteenth.
Same time, six o'clock.
December fifteenth, six o'clock, okay? January eighteenth is our scheduled meeting, six o'clock, that's the third Tuesday. We do have to have an organizational meeting. Mrs. Molnar, I would like to see the thirteenth of January. We have to go before the fifteenth? Thirteenth of January, would that work with everyone?
Do we plan to have a regular meeting on the eighteenth?
We will have the meeting on the eighteenth, then, yes.
Okay.
Okay, January eighteenth will be the regular meeting, the thirteenth will be?
Organization, the organizational.
Organizational meeting, okay?
What, what time do you want, do you want the same time?
Because you're six, how's your schedule, you have six work for you? In January?
Yeah.
Ms. Catters?
Yeah.
I brought a little opinion from you out there. Those two days, the thirteenth and the sixteenth work for? Eighteenth, I'm sorry, six, thirteenth and eighteenth work for you? They both be at six o'clock?
Well, and just for the record, typically on the organizational meeting, the board discusses, do they want to continue with what day for the regular meeting? And we've had the third Tuesday for our hour, doesn't mean it has to be that day. It's just been that way a long time. So, you know, I guess if on the thirteenth something were to change and the eighteenth didn't work. But I know for, you know, there's probably no reason we would need to change it unless there was a conflict with Ms. Catters, so.
Okay, so we will have the thirteenth organizational and the eighteenth for regular meeting for January. And in December, we move that to December thirteenth.
About fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I'm sorry. Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth. We've been changing many times here, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Ruth, you have those days?
I have, I have these here.
Make those down for notifications with taxpayers? Okay, thank you very much.
And you for the board meetings that set the date? We wait till next month to do a pro town or whatever for someone?
You will be the pro town. You are the only person left. You will have to be the pro town. We don't have a vote even. Everyone else, all the other four of us have to be in that squad. Okay, you will be the president pro town for the January thirteenth orientation meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Okay, anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
All right, now assuming, go to roll call, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mr. Shea?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.